She coming out, you park your car and you start walking around. You get to mingle with the community. The community knows most of us by our first name. So that is a completely new concept. So having a library here is, we're gonna also go in and you know assist them with their homework and do whatever it is that we can't.
No more need to worry about stepping on gang turf anymore. When you step into the land of books, everyone is welcome. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
Organizers hope to start a storytelling hour at the new library as well as reading programs for adults and those who speak English as a second language. As other baseball leagues struggle to find players, the West Hills Baseball League is celebrating more than four decades in existence. And now there's even more to celebrate as the community puts in place safety improvements at the busy park. Over 600 West Hills Baseball League players and their families gathered to celebrate the opening day of West Hills Baseball League's 42nd season. And as if that weren't reason enough to celebrate...
In addition to what we're doing today, we have a new crosswalk, a new traffic light, and a new parking lot we established across the street. Cooperation with LA County has a flood control area. And for many years, we've been trying to add additional parking because turnout from the parents and the youth of this community, not sufficient parking.
The improvements to the West Hills Baseball Fields and Recreation Center and surrounding areas were completed in time for the opening day festivities, and parents say not a day too soon.
It was so needed. We thank God for the new parking lot and the crosswalk, finally safety. It's been a, it was pretty scary not having that crosswalk because it gets crowded and busy here. The only accidents we've had have been fender benders, but it was just a matter of time in my opinion, had they not put the improvements in.
Now kids and their parents won't have to worry about dodging vehicles on the busy Valley Circle Boulevard.
Most importantly, the safety of kids not being able to cross the street when they are parking across.
What the kids see in these improvements goes beyond safety. They see just how much the community cares.
It looks great. It looks amazing. And the way they've upgraded it through the years is fantastic.
The parking lot was funded through propositions K and 40. The new parking lot has 62 stalls, perimeter fencing, and solar light fixtures for security, just to name a few of its features. Well, it's not very often that customers get singled out to receive recognition, but that's exactly what the Los Angeles International Airport did with its first-ever customs office customer from 50 years ago when the facility first opened. Anita Bennett has the story.
For Guy Fox and his family, this is a very special day.
It's really an event that can be cherished, you know, the rest of our lives because this is a historical event. And all over one simple little customs entry.
That customs entry was filed 50 years ago when LAX opened its first facility for international cargo.
When Guy Fox was here that morning, there really wasn't much fanfare. As I understand, he was the only person standing in line to be the first custom filer. So here we all are here to celebrate that.
On the anniversary of his filing, Guy was honored at the LAX Flight Path Learning Center Museum.
You are truly an angel in the city of angels. Congratulations, Mr. Fox.
He received a proclamation from the LA City Council, plus a certificate from Orange County leaders. U.S. Customs and Border Protection also sent a representative to mark the anniversary of its LAX facility.
That process now allowed us to clear cargo here from LAX as opposed to from downtown Los Angeles, bringing greater efficiencies and really opening the door for growth of the international air cargo here in LAX.
Now Guy even had a photo snapped of himself on that historic day, and that picture is now on permanent display here at the museum.
Nobody really thought that this was significant except for me. And nobody was really recognizing the fact that it was changing the dynamics of customs clearances, but I did.
Now 50 years later, the word is finally out. At LAX, I'm Anita Bennett for LA this week.
Before 1962, it took up to three days for international goods to be released from downtown. Now the process is almost instantaneous. North Hollywood's El Pratol Theater turned into Tinseltown for one night as future stars strutted their stuff at the Second Annual Los Angeles Student Media Festival. This year, the city-run award show included students countywide. Anna Marcos reports.
They may still be in high school, but these young filmmakers are already walking the red carpet. Thirty-two of them beat out close to 300 aspiring movie makers to win awards in the Second Annual LA Student Media Festival.
Um, the film name is Blank. It's supposed to be telling a story without any dialogue. And we basically had like two, three days of filming, and then basically mostly it was guerrilla filming.
It's really exciting and a new concept because I do want to go into animation.
These guys took Best of Show and a $1,000 scholarship for their winning documentary.
What inspired me to make this film was I, I just, I wound up with these horse trainers. And the fact that, you know, he only had one arm really, it just made me realize, you know, how lucky we kind of are. And I thought that we could definitely take this story and make it into something inspirational for everyone.
Lots of picture posing and paparazzi, just like the real Oscars. But this is the only award show for high school wannabe filmmakers in Southern California. It's the brainchild of Councilmember Paul Krikorian.
This is a great opportunity for us to highlight the incredible creativity of some of our high school students throughout Los Angeles, really to see the depth and the breadth of what they have to say. And at the same time, it's an off, it's an opportunity for us to highlight the next generation of talent.
From the next generation of movie makers to the next generation of pop divas, this was a night for future stars to shine. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
Besides the $1,000 scholarship, other prizes included lunch with industry people, filmmaking workshops, and more. For more information, visit lasmf.lacity.org. The LE Fire Department under scrutiny for misreporting response times, and speeders beware on a deadly stretch of Sunset Boulevard. Also, a rarely-known airport police unit receives recognition. These stories and more in City Beat. Fire Chief Brian Cummings coming under fire after admitting he did not clearly communicate data about the department's emergency response times to city council members before they voted to approve a plan that eliminated 18 fire companies and four ambulance companies as part of the 2011-2012 budget process. The data presented to the mayor suggested first responders made it to the scene of medical emergencies within five minutes 78% of the time. The department has since acknowledged that crews were meeting the five-minute goal 63% of the time prior to 2009. The LE Department of Transportation has installed two speed feedback signs on a deadly stretch of Sunset Boulevard in Brentwood. Two years ago, a 13-year-old girl was killed there when she was struck by a car as she walked to a school bus. Each speed indicator sign has a radar and solar component and provides feedback to passing motorists about their current speed. Not many know about the Airport Police Dignitary Protection Unit, but when dignitaries like the Duke and Duchess of Cambridge come to Los Angeles, it is the DPU's job to protect them as they arrive at and depart from Los Angeles World Airport's three airports. And recently, the LE Board of Airport Commissioners publicly honored the five-member unit.
They run almost 200 operations a month, or almost 2,400 a year. That's about seven per day. And as you can imagine, some are far, far more complex and involved than others.
The Dignitary Protection Unit, which serves LAX, Ontario, and Van Nuys airports, was established in 1986. A rendition of an Irish-American favorite, Danny Boy, and bagpipes filled the City Hall Council chambers as the city celebrated St. Patrick's Day.
We must not forget the impact the Irish made to California's success. Remember that without, that it was Mulholland, an Irishman from Northern Ireland, who brought water to this great city.
Councilman Tom Labonge also handed out proclamations to members of the community who have engaged in activities that highlight Irish-American culture. And also on St. Patrick's Day, good deeds were performed as LA's first responders shaved their heads to raise money for cancer research. Gómez tells us what St. Baldriks Day was all about.
Bald is beautiful. Just ask these 200 or so cops, firefighters, and other volunteers. They're going a cut above the rest for a good cause.
Well, we're here to raise money for cancer research. Essentially, we're competing a little bit against the firefighters to see which of us can raise more funds.
Together, they've raised over $100,000 for pediatric cancer research. That's the buzz at this year's St. Baldriks Day event. Why is it called St. Baldriks? Well, it takes place around St. Patrick's Day, hence the green theme. As for the bald part, these pictures tell the story. Here's Dr. Clark Anderson before his haircut, and here he is after.
The St. Baldriks Foundation, alright, has helped fund cancer research for all children with cancer, and it has increased the survival over 20%.
Anything that we can do to help get back to the community. This cause is incredibly important to see a bunch of children, firefighters, law enforcement, and communities come together.
For some, the changes are pretty dramatic.
It looks like a mystery right now because I can't see what they're doing, but I'm certain that it'll come out okay.
For others, it's just a mild trim. Call it sheer luck on St. Baldriks Day for Councilman Dennis Zine.
I'm doing it for the good cause, and I'll donate blood after this, all for the great event. Thank you very, very much, and back to you at the studio.
In North Hollywood, Gil Reyes for LA this week.
Farther south, first responders held a similar St. Baldriks Day fundraiser in San Pedro. And in this week's list of things to do, creating art with chalk on a historical piece of sidewalk, pancakes on horses, and learning about food sustainability. You don't need a canvas or paintbrush to draw the LA skyline. Try the urban canvases of the walkways outside the Chinese-American Museum at El Pueblo Plaza and a few sticks of chalk. On Saturday, March 31st, the museum is hosting chalk art and inviting the public to envision and draw their own vibrant buildings right on the historic sidewalks of El Pueblo Plaza. The family-friendly event is free and chalk will be provided. It takes place from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Chinese-American Museum located at 425 North Los Angeles Street. The event, sponsored by the Getty, is inspired by the museum's newest exhibit, Breaking Ground: Chinese-American Architects in Los Angeles, 1945 to 1980. More info can be found at camla.org. If you love horses and you love pancakes, then you won't want to miss the Ride On Therapeutic Horsemanship's annual open house and free pancake breakfast on Saturday, March 31st at the Ride On Ranch at 10860 Topanga Canyon Boulevard in Chatsworth. It takes place from 9:00 a.m. to noon. Ride On offers physical therapy on horseback for sport, exercise, and recreation for children and adults with special needs. While enjoying a delicious free pancake breakfast, you'll get to learn about the services Ride On provides, see their facility, and learn about volunteer opportunities. For more information, contact Sarah Jones at sarah@ridon.org. Saturday, March 31st is also the Good Food Fair: A Taste of the San Fernando Valley. It happens from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Silmar High School Football Field at 13050 Borden Avenue in Silmar. The event, part of the mayor's Day of Service, is a chance for Angelenos to unite in performing service projects that focus on building a more just and sustainable food system. There will be games, prizes, and of course, food. Call 818-833-3709 or email kbonia@laep.org. And remember, you can find this information on our Facebook page. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. And that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at lecityview.org. You can also follow us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA this week.
Hi, I'm Craig Erwin in Los Angeles.
Hi, I'm Trenton Erwin, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35, our city hall channel.
A platoon-sized formation for unusual occurrences. You can come up here, Joe, come on up here. I mean, you were in the blue suit just recently. He's our newest council member, direct from Harbor Division. During the examination of the crowd-control tactics of other agencies and adapting those tactics to the needs of the LAPD, Metropolitan Division developed a mobile field force concept. Metropolitan Division first trained LAPD on a department-wide basis in 1992 and 1993. Mr. Englander, come on and join us. You're only a reserve officer, but you are an officer. That first iteration of the mobile field force training was termed Camp Snooping, was conducted at Dodger Stadium. Again, this is 1992 and 1993. During that time, Metro also developed and delivered a training program for our recruit officers. And in 2000, the nation experienced several violent and destructive protests surrounding issues facing World Trade Organization. In anticipation of the 2000 Democratic National Convention, LAPD asked Metropolitan Division to provide the department with an updated mobile field force training. The second iteration of training became known as Mobile Field Force 2000, conducted at Legion Park Academy and Dodger Stadium. And I think we all went through that training. The events surrounding the 2000 Democratic National Convention, the 2007 May Day protests caused the department to review its policies and procedures related to crowd control. Then in 2007, 2008, Metropolitan Division was once again asked to develop a lesson plan and tactics that incorporated recommendations made by the courts following the above situations. Metropolitan Division's third iteration of training became known as 21st Century Crowd Management and Control Training. In an effort to facilitate the training quickly, the department moved the training to Los Alamos Joint Operations Base. Recognizing that the field force tactics were perishable skills, in an effort to comply with the May Day structural relief order, the department established guidelines to continue in-service training for all officers. And in 2011, the department established a second-year training cycle requiring all members of the department to be trained mobile field force tactics, Metro once again was asked to develop and implement the training. The fourth iteration, which is the current training cycle, simply referred to as Crowd Management and Control Training, and is being conducted at the Amundson Training Center in an off-site location in Westchester. Primary responsibility for field force training falls upon Metro's B Platoon, C Platoon, E Platoon, and Training Coordination Unit. And in 2011, 2012, Crowd Management and Control Training is a 10-hour post-certified course that covers the following topics: review of past tactical incidents, crowd management and crowd control, types of crowds, unlawful assembly, penal code sections, use of force, policy review, baton tactics, mobile field force and squad tax, and arrest team procedures. And what we want to do is acknowledge these folks, and I went through this training recently along with my colleague, Councilman Englander, and I think you went through it too while you were still on the department. And it's outstanding training, brings us up to date in the current procedures, deployment of Los Angeles police officers, and we most recently saw that deployed here at City Hall on the Occupy Los Angeles, which was an operation without violence, without injury, unlike we saw in other cities across the country. So what we want to do is acknowledge and congratulate Metropolitan Division, B Platoon, C Platoon, E Platoon, and Training Coordination Unit for all their hard work and dedication to develop and implement crowd management and control training to these fine members of the Los Angeles Police Department that worked the elite Metropolitan Unit. We want to acknowledge, we have a resolution signed by the city leaders to Metropolitan Division Training Unit, one to the B Platoon, one to the C Platoon, and one to the E Platoon of the Los Angeles Police Department Metropolitan Division. And what I want to do now is turn the microphone over to my two colleagues before we hear from the representatives from LAPD's Metropolitan Division. Seniority first.
Oh, seniority, thank you, thank you. Thanks for not going by height. I want to say that not only were they critical training with Metropolitan in this new area, but LAPD has been on the cutting edge of training and techniques for many years. In fact, most of what is done worldwide, not just in the United States, but worldwide, comes from this unit, comes from LAPD. Not just the tactics, but a lot of the programs, like SWAT and many other programs that have come out of this phenomenal organization. And so it's the men and women that are behind me that deserve all the credit, while there has been many in the command staff that take the credit. These are the guys on the front lines that come up with the programs, that train 10,000 officers, that supply the post-certified training, that get approval from the state of California, that write the programs, that are tested not only in the street, but in the courtrooms as well, and keep this city safer. So I applaud all of the Los Angeles police officers, I applaud my colleagues as well. We are a safer city now that we have four former or in current men and women that are on the council in uniform, and one reserve Navy officer as well. This is a very safe city, and I want to say thank you to my colleague Dennis Zine for bringing them to the council. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Also, thank you, Councilmember Zine, for bringing the elite, the elite of LAPD here in city council chambers. And we talk about the best of the best, being the best of the best in the police department. What we have representing here are the best of the best when it comes to law enforcement, when it comes to tactics. And I know we're the best because other agencies, not only across the nation, but across the world, come to Los Angeles and are being trained with Metro. And I just want to take the opportunity, and thank you for allowing me to speak, to thank Metropolitan Division. Most recently, we had Metro at Harbor area in Wilmington to address the recent spike in violent crime year-to-date, so I want to thank them personally, on behalf of my residents in Wilmington, for addressing the issue. And I see behind me Officer Kelly, he's a senior lead here, not a senior lead, but what do you call it, plus one? He's a plus one for Metro. And I recall watching LAPD live on the beat and watching Officer Kelly then, and on TV, you know, protecting and serving the great city. And I said, that's what I want to do. And I joined the LAPD with the help of then Sergeant Pat Gannon, and here I am, serving in a different way. But I miss the LAPD, and it's great to see the LAPD family here. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, colleagues. And I just want to say that I was so impressed with the training that we went through. And it was a day-long training, and it was impactful training, and it was reserves from the Los Angeles Police Department that were involved in that training. The caliber of instructor was incredible, and these are officers who work daily throughout the city of Los Angeles, and extra activity they get involved in, very dedicated, very professional. If you saw the training, you'd be duly impressed, as I was impressed, and that's why we want to bring them here, to get this recognition, because folks don't recognize, other than the folks in LAPD who are getting trained by these folks, what good they do. And what I want to do now is just bring them up, one by one.
Mr. Zine, you have a couple of members that'd like to speak.
Okay, and then what I want to do, Mr. President, with your indulgence, these are senior members of the Los Angeles Police Department who are still in uniforms, still protecting and serving, their name and how many years of service they have, and you'll be impressed with the dedication that we have with these representatives from Metropolitan Division.
That's fine. Mr. Reyes, followed by Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, colleagues, for bringing forward this great group of public servants. I want to thank you for your hard work. I know there's harsh lessons learned after what occurred in McCarthy Park a few years back. And when we look at the training, it's essential not only to understand the technical aspects, but also the human factor. And it's been very clear to me that those who are now engaged in some of the toughest neighborhoods in the city, around downtown, around McCarthy Park, Pico Union, it's tough because you look at the sense of desperation, many folks living below poverty in the hundreds of thousands, and you're in the middle of it. And to be able to address it in a way that is humane, that recognizes the person as a human being, but also to be technically at a level where we're doing our best to protect our communities is something that's very critical. So for that, I thank you. I represent the Pico Union, Westlake, the areas around Chinatown and Lincoln Heights, just on the other side of the freeway, where you have three new high schools. So you've got this amazing investment, large number of populations that are essentially engaging each other, and then you have yourselves in the middle of it. And so I thank you for your patience, your presence, and more importantly, for being that human being that understands the value of life and how you treat our constituents. Thank you very much.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, and thank you to the three members and Mr. Parks. Between the four of you, the service you've given the city as police officers has been decades of your time, and I want to thank all the officers who are behind you, not only for what they've done, but we're very excited to build out and to bring you back to the old Rampart Station and to have a proper headquarters for Metro. And the community there who misses having the presence of police officers there every single day, I think are going to welcome you with open arms. We're going to make sure there's a build-out that's a safe, up-to-date, modernized, a state-of-the-art facility there, but also a place where you can interact in the historic Filipino town Rampart area even as you're deployed throughout the city. Just having those cars come out and come back in that area will add to the safety that we've really established in turning that new page in the Rampart area. So congratulations, everybody, congratulations on doing the work. Los Alamitos is actually where I drill out of, so I see sometimes our LAPD officers and recruiting banners that are up there. But thanks for what you do, and we're looking forward to welcoming you onto Temple Street in a couple of years.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti.
Mr. Zine.
Captain, and then we'll introduce all the personnel.
Is my name in the two years?
No, if you have any comments on you, you're the captain.
Councilmen Zine, Busciano, and Englander, thank you very much for those kind words, Councilman Reyes and Councilman Garcetti, and to the rest of the council, we very much appreciate your support and understanding the importance of what we do every day. Not only do we patrol the streets in a crime suppression mode each and every day, but our training component is very important. Last year in 2011, the personnel behind me and the other 254 members of Metropolitan Division trained nearly 16,000 Los Angeles police officers and a number of officers from other agencies throughout the country. And it's through that hard work that we're spreading the word of just how good the Los Angeles Police Department is, Metropolitan Division, and the city of Los Angeles, in not only crowd control and crowd management, but in all aspects of policing. So thank you very much for your continued success. We appreciate it.
Your years of service?
Thirty-three years.
Thank you.
Good morning. I want to thank the council for recognizing this, Councilman Zine, appreciate it very much. I'd be remiss if I didn't comment on what the impact, not only in the training component as far as crowd management and crowd control, but the actual crime reduction that's favored in this city, and it has a lot to do with what Metropolitan does as far as being problem solvers in particular areas and responding to crime trends on a moment's notice. We are a 24-hour operation in terms of being on call, being able to respond to incidents. We have our underwater dive team, SWAT, the security details for the mayor and the chief of police. So it's multifaceted what we do at Metropolitan Division, and the officers behind me represent some of the finest that LAPD has to offer. Having said that, I want to just comment very briefly, then I'll close, is that Occupy LA event, when that idea came to us as a problem to solve, I'm very proud to say that that plan was developed at the officer, sergeant, and lieutenant level with oversight by myself and captain and control along with our chain of command. But the crux of that plan was developed by the lower echelon of the department, and it went off, in my opinion, without a hitch. Having stood in the rotunda for three or four hours prior to that event, taking off with the hundreds of officers that were there, knowing that the world is watching and knowing that we had to execute in such a manner that it would go out without a hitch. We didn't know that until we actually went through the doors, as all of you saw. The way it was handled was done in an extremely professional manner, beyond any expectation that I had, and with all the apprehension that was going on, I can tell you that, again, I'm very, very proud of Metropolitan Division and the work that our officers do, and thank you very much for the support.
How many years of service?
Well, 34 years of service at LAPD.
Thirty-four years of service.
His next-to-last day here, Lieutenant. Cap, thank you, I just demoted you too. So, Cap, thanks for your service.
Thank you, thank you very much.
All right, so if we can have the personnel come up identifying your years of service. Don't be shy.
Brian Morrison, 18 years.
Tony Lamedico, 30 years.
Manny Rumien, 17 years.
All your years.
Dave Carter, 32 years.
All your years.
Roger Burfee, 22 years.
Andre Rainey, 14 years.
Greg Hoskins, 24 years.
Scott Brown, 28 years.
John Upmussino, 24 years.
Mary Davis, 20 years.
Juan Flores, 17.
Jeff Alley, 29 years.
Patrick Rudolph, 18 years.
Anybody else? All right, thank you. So what you see is the experience, the dedication to public safety here in Los Angeles. Let's hear it from the Los Angeles Police Department Metropolitan Division. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine, thank you. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. If you would please call the roll.
Alarcon, Busciano, Cardenas, Englander, Garcetti, Weezer, Corret, Krikory, and Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendale, Zine, Weston, Tovimer is present in a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Weezer moves, Mr. Corret seconds, next?
Commended to our resolutions for approval.
Mr. Reyes moves, Mr. Garcetti seconds. That would bring us where?
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, now would be the time for the flag salute.
Okay, if we could all rise for our salute led by Councilman Corretts.
Please put your hand over your heart, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts. At this point in time, I think it would be appropriate to run through the agenda.
Items one and two are items known as for public hearings. The Department of Building and Safety reports that item two may be received and filed in as much as the lien has been rescinded by the department.
Okay, without objection on item two. So that leaves us with one. Do we have any cards?
Yes, there's cards on items both one and two.
One and two?
Yes.
Okay, that moves us to the next section. I think that's items three through 10, is it?
Yes, items three through 10 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, specials members? There are no specials. So let's move forward with the vote. On items three through 10, let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That brings us where?
Items 11 through 21 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes required for consideration.
Without objection. Are there any cards on these items?
Yes, cards on 11, 12, 13, 15, 16, 18, and 19.
Specials members. Mr. Parks, well, we have a card on that anyway, but Mr. Parks calls 19 special. Okay, on the remaining items, let's move forward and open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Madam Clerk, that brings us to what, general public comment?
Yes.
Okay, let's start out with that. I know I have a card from Mr. Nightingale in the valley, so I want to call Mr. Nightingale, Paul, after him, Paul Derigo, and Sean Murphy. So if Paul Derigo and Sean could please come forward, and Mr. Nightingale, you're up now. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, how you doing today? Rick Nightingale, you know, that was really a dog and pony show regarding, excuse me, KFI. And then you turn around and had that committee there, and everything's aye, aye, aye. I disagree with this, I disagree with that. You had a black woman there, that she disagrees with everything, that we should be getting this and we should be getting that. You had a black gentleman there that, oh, you're not hiring enough blacks to turn around and hire this, and we're being discriminated against and so forth. And you had a Hispanic guy there that turned around, and he's all upset at what KFI was saying regarding the anchor babies and all the other stuff. Well, that's what they're supposed to be doing, is bringing you into the news, because with all the liberal stations around, you're not getting the proper news anyway. So it's just another viewpoint that's giving it to them. You know, I mean, you talk about discrimination, I was discriminated against back in the 70s, I wanted to be a fireman. But guess what? I was told when I really made a complaint why I wasn't taken, considering I was right at the top 5%, I wasn't in enough civic activities. When I finally pressed it, I flunked my oral, grabbed that, flunked my oral. So, you know, you get about this discrimination crap, well, I got discriminated against, I just picked myself another job and went to it, and that's just the way it is. It really gets old, and everybody thinks that if they're one color, race, or whatever, that they should get a job better than somebody else. If somebody could do my job better, then they'll have it. I got this, people got mad at me because I was in my 50s and 60s, and I'm out working somebody that's in their 20s, and they complained because I made them look bad. Well, I'm really sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Nightingale. Paul, well, here, Sean, you're up there, go right ahead.
Okay, good morning, city council. We need to clean the storm drains. Every time we cross Lake Shima, Mo Park, the water rises, and my girlfriend couldn't get across. She almost had trouble, she couldn't get across the street. So it's Van Nuys, especially Van Nuys in Noroff. We need to clean the storm drains.
Thank you. And after Paul, we'll have Pat McCosker and Phyllis Doherty.
Hi, good morning. My name is Paul Derigo, and I would like to introduce myself for candidate for the position of Animal Commissioner. My position for LA has always been that this city be zero-kill. In understanding the brief definition of zero-kill as no adoptable animal will be euthanized, I concur with the mayor, and I support him fully in his pledge for Los Angeles. A few of the highlights and experience and skills I bring to the position is I have a BS degree in Technical Management, an associate's degree in Marketing, I have years of experience in sales, certifications in computer technology, I have produced my own TV pilot and numerous films where no is definitely unacceptable. My tenacity for follow-up and follow-through is experienced by many, some of you, I'm sure, wish I'd stopped calling your office. I volunteer for LA Animal Services for over seven years. I fostered and rescue animals. Beginning in 2009, I've worked with Kathy Davis to reinvigorate the Reserve Animal Control Officer Program called RACO. In the past two years, I've visited over 20 neighborhood councils, giving over 50 speeches for the purposes of promoting LA Animal Services fundraising. As a direct result, I raised approximately $20,000 to pay for a RACO training class. I took part in the Spade-A-LA campaign and helped to raise over $2,000 for publicity. I succeeded in getting several major hotels that donate their used blankets and sheets for the shelter. But six months ago, I learned RACO hit a stumbling block with misinterpretation of a federal labor law. RACO fell nine months behind schedule, nine of the 11 graduates for the first class were suspended, and the second class canceled. I took action. I spent six months of research and meetings. I enrolled the gracious support of Councilmembers Zine, Rosendale, Corretts, and notably Alarcon, who picked up the phone, and he called personnel and directly asked the situation to be reviewed and the suspension to be lifted. Within two weeks of that meeting, the nine ACTs that were removed for service were back on again. Now the ACTs can now be included in the next class.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. McCosker and Phyllis Doherty, please.
Good morning, council members. Unfortunately, this is the latest installment of my reports to you on the effects of the closure of fire companies and ambulances in your district. Over the weekend, on Saturday, I got a call from some of my members, they went on an emergency in Councilmember Corretts's district at the Century City Mall. It was a choking call, person eating food, choking. Unfortunately, the nearest company was out on a call. There was a closure in that district in this year's budget, Fire Station 92's district. And because there wasn't another company available, the response came from the next district over, the ambulance came from the district beyond that, all the way west of UCLA. Took them six minutes to get from the station to in front of the mall and push the button. Took them another minute and a half to two minutes to get to the patient's side. By the time they got there, he had gone without oxygen for so long that he was in full arrest. They did everything right, they did heroic work, they dislodged the food, they got him breathing again, not conscious, but breathing as I understand it. He went a significant amount of time without oxygen to his brain because of this delay, and as you know, every second counts. And by the way, this may be one where the delay was only a minute or so, but a minute without oxygen to the brain for this gentleman. So I hope and pray, I don't know the outcome for him, I hope and pray that it's as good as it can be, but it's not as good as it would have been had that company been open. I also got a call over the weekend from the mayor's guy wanting to know if we can start talking nice and being nice about this and not so public. I am going to be public every damn day between now and the time that these companies are open, because the bodies are piling up, people are suffering, and we've had it. We want every single company reopened as quickly as possible. Your constituents are counting on it, and we are counting on you. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Doherty, followed by Zuma Dog, Joe Jimenez, and Mr. Herman.
What an honor to follow Mr. McCosker and his devotion and loyalty to the people of the city. This is Phyllis Doherty with Animal Issues Movement, and just as Mr. Corretts said that he felt that you had been duped by the fire department, I, like Mr. McCosker, will come in here and continue to tell you that you are being duped by the Department of Animal Services that is telling you that everything will be fine if we just do more adoptions and do no-kill, and we can cut down the resources to perform the basic field operations of picking up stray and dangerous animals, licensing by officers who know what they're doing to ensure rabies vaccinations, and enforcing humane laws and public safety laws is not necessary. In the same way that a person rarely dies in a house fire in this city because of the quick response and the prevention methods, few people suffer serious or fatal attacks from dogs because our officers are constantly out there picking up the animals that would become a threat, and they are demanding proper care and confinement. You were duped when you were told that San Diego is doing just great with six dogs and there's no problem, and we should change Los Angeles' structure. San Diego had three fatal attacks last year, and I can't even count how many attacks that caused damage. We already had one fatality down there of a postal carrier already this year, and Los Angeles is just one bite behind San Diego to be in that category. The reason you have a false sense of security, and it's important that you know this, is that the radio frequency, this was done before, that allowed the media to hear the calls for assistance and dog attacks was blocked, so that you would not know what's going on in the city. It's not because the problem does not exist. By removing the captains, reducing the experience factor in managing animal control and in manning it, you're setting up the city so that innocent residents will be the victims of major animal-related tragedies. And just as Mr. McCosker said, they deserve more from you.
Thank you. And before we go to the next speakers, but I please ask you to come forward, Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to inform Mr. McCosker and the public that this past Friday, we had a very special public safety meeting discussing this issue, and a lot of attention is being paid to the issue of deployment within the LA City Fire Department, so it's not landing on deaf ears. We are moving forward aggressively with the Public Safety Committee, with our chair, Mr. Englander, myself, and the other members, to make sure that we can provide that safety and get those answers to those questions and do what we need to do. So it's not landing on deaf ears, we are with you, and we want to make sure the public that we're doing everything we can to provide that medical service, as 80% of the calls are for medical. I just wanted to make sure you know we're listening, we're moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Zuma Dog, Joe Jimenez, and Mr. Herman.
I don't understand. Why are they starting now with trying to make sure people don't die because they wasted all the money on fire? Oh, oh, so now we're going to start? Well, you should resign right now and step down, Bud. I would suggest that Zine should step down as this position because he's just starting now to listen after he squandered, pilfered, wasted the money. I hate to remind city council that I spoke with Bud Overm on Friday in an exclusive interview. I said, "How's the FBI investigation going, Bud?" He said, "It's always here." So the reason why you don't have money for fire services is to quote the LA Times, people like Eric Garcetti, who's a phony. That's right. LA Times calls Garcetti a phony now. And so you know what? I hope Pat McCosker keeps coming here. What does it say about a city when the council can't even provide fire services and they had to lie about it? And then the mayor and everybody says, "Well, gee, if you could just complain about it more politely, if you could just say it more politely and respectfully, we don't want our feelings hurt." Now it's time for the Bill Rosendahl roast because it's the six-year anniversary of Zuma Dog and Matt Dowd in council chambers. And Bill Rosendahl, Mr. Leader, loves Occupy LA, loves the First Amendment, loves free speech. You know, whenever I'm talking against you guys saying I'm calling the FBI, he's like, "Good, good, 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 good. Call out of this area. Good, good. Oh, one more for you, Zuma Dog." You know, I, I could just hear it now, Herb Wesson. Bill, why does Zuma Dog still do it in my chambers? Well, that's the way you want it because I won a federal lawsuit already and you still want me here. You want me here through October, through October to say that the FBI is investigating Herb Wesson's district. Michael Bay taking bribes, going to people when they have permits up for renewal and having Michael Bay go over there and say, "Hey, Herb Wesson needs a donation. Herb Wesson needs a donation." That's how it works around here, people. And so if Bill Rosendahl wants to limit gadflies, I didn't get to the roast.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jimenez. Please, you're disrupting the meeting. Your time has expired. Joe Jimenez, followed by Mr. Herman, please come forward. Please come forward, sir.
My name is Joe Jimenez. I live in Boyle Heights. I want to know whether streets on Soro Street has been, has not been fixed for so long. I use a sidewalk to walk on and travel by public buses, MTA. I have a disability and use and need your help to make a use of the sidewalk passable for my safety. Thank you. Do not limit our time as public speakers, Mr. Rosendahl. I'd like to take.
On behalf of Mr. Jimenez, I'd like to read.
Let us reset the, oh, no.
On behalf, is that okay?
Yeah.
On behalf, I'm assisting him. It says, "But make it clear that the government will interpret ADA. You may want to consider training your officers and your managers to ensure that all of the city employees, bureaucrats, district departments, bureau departments will consider what the disabled under the ADA, even if the disability is not immediate obvious." Thank you, Mr. Jimenez.
Okay. Mr. Herman, you're, you're next.
Today I speak on behalf of people with ADA issues. Consider Mr. Salzberg, consider Mr. Jimenez, people who are of the public. Have we maintained standards of integrity, conduct, and concern for the public's interest? Have we treated constituents and civilians of Angelenos fairly, equitably against reprisal? When we violate any law, rule, or regulation which implements or directs concerns for the public, how do we interpret ADA? Illegally discriminate for or against any ADA order of compliance? These practices are those actions that should never occur. They are the result and the outcome of poor management practice in LA. Again, poor management practices in LA. I, Mr. Herman, strongly ask and invite all you council members to consider and be polite about the issues regarding your constituents. They need more time to speak here in public comment. It is not something easy to do. It takes time. Mr. Salzberg, his issue with the city attorney, let's resolve it, let's squash it, as I put it. Put it to an end, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Ed Reyes, Mr. Rosendahl, we want our time as public speakers. We will speak. You cannot deny our presence here under ADA to speak on our behalf in interest of any Angelino in the city of Los Angeles. And again, please take into mind and picture what people with disabilities have to go through and I thank you for your presence.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. Okay, Henry, I see you in the back. If you could come forward, Henry Marine, Mr. Walsh, and Arnold Sachs, please come forward.
From the erection of a trust-funded tale to the erection of the truth, all you can hear is the perceived truth. Ongoing Hackla MOUs show what initially the council and the housing authority authorized the CAO to do in compliance with city, state, and federal laws. However, we know that didn't happen. Now, it's easy to perceive a person who is receiving union benefits allegedly to expect that he is being provided those funds by a union contractor. But you know, in this case, that didn't happen either. The money was being deducted from the pay of Hackla and Co. employees and sent to union trust funds under the guise, it was employer contributions. Now, I asked my CD8 representative to get this agendized and find out why the CAO failed and refused to account for his time and money. That never happened. It's about time for something to start happening. You understand what's going on here? You let the CAO do things at will with public funds which cannot be done. So if you continue to let this go on, you're going to be just as guilty as the people in bail. You get a ride in a black and white sheriff's car, just like they did. Now, come on, wake up.
Thank you, Henry. Mr. John Walsh, Walsh, followed by Arnold Sachs. Mr. Walsh.
Hello. John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. First eight days, the infamous Zev post has been up there. First eight days, 70, 70, 70,000 successful server requests. That's this post that shows Eric Garcetti beheading Wendy Grule. And also, is it true? Well, last Thursday, I said face-to-face at MTA board meeting to Zev. Is it true? He didn't say one word in three and a half hours. The only person who spoke was the mayor who kept banging his gavel. That's what's happening. Incidentally, now I have to stand up for Mr. Garcetti and thanks for all the information on Zev, Eric. Thanks. And remember, let me tell you, you are all, if you're running for office up here for, for mayor, you are being followed by private detectives and the information will be leaked to me. The information about Zev was leaked to all the reporters in the city and only John Walsh put it up there. I have this Trayvon shirt on now because yesterday we had a thousand, not hippies, not children of hippies, not white people, not well-fed white people, but we had a thousand victims of your racism, African-American young blacks angry, standing on that, on those steps. And the picture wasn't shown of them standing on the steps and you know what? It didn't appear. The picture did not appear. As far as Eric, he was, yes, he was called a phony and a lightweight. He was called by Jim Newton, who wrote a flop book on Eisenhower. And the reason is because they want Zev to run. And you want to know why Zev will never run? You want to know? Because this, they call, they said that I broke up Zev's marriage. If John Walsh can break up your marriage, your marriage is worth crap. John Walsh, HollywoodHighlands.org, join us.
Okay, Mr. Sachs, followed by Matt Dowd, followed by Arminak Norojanian.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sachs. Uh, I don't know where to even start. Thank you for having an on-time caucus, Mr. Wesson. Do you have a Tell the Truth Caucus, by the way? Some, some elected leadership that would actually be able to tell the truth? I bet that's a zero. Now, um, this editorial in the Daily Breeze says politics as usual regarding redistricting in LA. But I think the battle over Walmart was politics as usual. A big council meeting, yapping away when the permits were already pulled, like you did with the business, you know, the business improvement, allowance to business, local businesses, giving them the 8% locally adjustment when local meant county and state. Another wonderful meeting, blabbing away and getting nothing done. And it's unfortunate. Mr. Reyes, poor Mr. Reyes, couldn't get the public safety improvements he wanted because he has no redevelopment funds anymore. But he's been a councilman for 10 years. So what about the redevelopment funds then? What happened to those redevelopment funds? Now you have no funds. You could have been a contender, Ed. You could have been a contender with redevelopment funds. Now you got nothing. So for 10 years, when you had them, you got nothing and now you got nothing again. And I'd like to thank you, Mr. Wesson, for your wonderful job regarding that redistricting hearing. You know, I asked you, the staff in the, in the, in the city clerk's office to check some items on the agenda for, that I had put some cards in. And I got it back that all the items had been waived from committee to be considered in council chambers.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sachs. Mr. Dowd, Mr. Dowd, followed by Arminak Norojanian.
All right, Zuma Dog's right. Bill Rosendahl, he's like, yes, yes, okay, file the federal case and, you know, he's like, oh, that's so cute, all the public comment. He thought our comment was cute. He thought Zuma Dog was a cute puppy. He's grown up now, a big old dog's biting him. And here's the problem. You've got the fire union here telling you about people dropping dead in Paul Coretts's district because there's no response time. Now here's the problem, Paul Coretts, you just voted $100,000 for Myers-Nave to send us depositions. We got them all today, all the performers who already got an injunction. It's already done. But now they're wasting $100,000 to get the information that I already gave Laurie Rittenberg. So there's the fire stations getting shut down because Nooch wants to be elected to district attorney. And these attorneys, Myers-Nave, if you go to ethics, they're donating to his campaign and for quid pro quo, he's sending them general fund fire money to pay for these attorneys to go through all these formalities that have already been, they're already on the table. They could settle a lot of these people, Herb, for way less. You know, they just want the city to own up and be responsible, but you're sending $100,000 of fire money to some evil downtown attorneys, Myers-Nave, Dawn McIntosh, and they're just sucking money out of the city now because you're too irresponsible to own up and say, "Okay, Matt Dowd, Zuma Dog, you were right. The judge ruled in your favor. Now tell Bill Rosendahl, get off his ass wherever he is and do something. We're tired of the bullshit."
Now you're disrupting the meeting, Matt, at the end and you, no, you're, you are disrupting the meeting. Okay, Mr. Norojanian.
And, yes, Mr. City Attorney. The Channel 35 camera did not note it, but Mr. Dowd was still yelling at council well after his time was up.
Thank you. Yes. All right, keep it down. Go on.
Good morning, uh, um, council members, respectful council members. Good morning, Phil Angelino. My name is Arminak Norojanian and I'm a liberal Democrat, Texas-Pentland liberal, like what, uh, former president, George Bush, you used to call Democrats. I run for the seat of California State Assembly for this year, June 5th elections. I ask all those Hispanic and black voters to give me, to give me their vote, to vote for me to, uh, in order for, for me to know, to deliver all those wide package of liberal reform and technological revolution. Actually, I stand for rational integration, environmental protection, technological revolution, and all the progressive stuff. Actually, uh, I propose to raise taxes 50% against wealthy individuals and against industrial corporations as well, 50% in order to remedy budget deficit in California, create more jobs with government orders, government contracts. It used to be done in California for decades. Actually, uh, Californian governor Edmund Brown's plan to raise tax only 3% against wealthy individuals is too reactionary, I believe. And my plan is to raise taxes 50% against industrial corporations in order to increase social spending, in order to run social programs, in order to avoid layoffs of state workers like teachers, firefighters, and police officers, in order to fight organized crime as well. I also propose to, uh, ban all medical marijuana dispensaries as we illegally violate United States Customs Substances Act. 56% of Californians rejected Proposition 19 last year, according to MSNBC report. And I believe that the city council members should actually reject City令181530, which illegally legalizes sales of harmful narcotic marijuana in the city of Los Angeles. Many Angelenos were left out quality.
Thank you. Thank you. Last speaker for general public comment, if we could go to the valley for Donna Peerman.
Yeah, Merritt Fugler was trying to get here. I wish you could have extended it for her. Anyway, uh, we need to, um, boring now. Okay, we need to do something about the buses. The buses are really bad, especially over there in, um, Westwood, so, I mean, West Los Angeles. So I need, uh, Rosendahl to listen to what I'm saying, that a lot of times that the buses are really full if they go all over towards Santa Monica. For some wrong reason, they believe that there's more people going downtown. But then when they finally see a couple of buses, they're saying the short line, when they finally get on, there's very crowded and you're making these veterans happen to, uh, go on crowded buses. And when they come back and the date, uh, in the afternoon, there's a lot of kids getting back and they don't seem to think that the kids are very important. Anyway, um, I wanted to say, um, okay, I want to say that the people that, uh, we need to keep, bring the races together, you know, blacks, whites, and Hispanics, you know, we're all people on this earth, you know? We need to not go against each other, you know? And so it is bad when somebody in that shoots that African-American when he didn't do anything wrong. But we have to remember that is one individual and, um, and, uh, and we need to go and put that person in jail and punish that one person that does things wrong. Because we know that, uh, February 1984, uh, where Big Brother is watching you, you know, that everybody needs to bring together so that we won't have a situation like 1984 where the government is doing everything and taking care of everybody because everybody knows how to take care of them, you know, learns to take care of each other.
Thank you, Ms. Peerman. Thank you very much. Okay, that concludes general public comment. Uh, Madam Clerk, at this point in time, I think that Mr. Parks, if you're ready, Mr. Parks called 19 special. But Mr. Parks, I've got two public comment cards, so why don't I call them up first? That would be Mr. Sean Murphy and John Walsh. This is on item 19.
Uh, yes, Mr. President, I'm being against this item. Thank you.
Mr. Walsh on item 19. This is a re-
This is a reward. Our city has a racist police department. And if you don't believe that, see what happened yesterday. I want to applaud Chief Parks. You've seen the light. You're on our side now. Jason Purvis Randall was murdered by racism. No different than the racism that took Trayvon out. And I happen to be a white that tells you the truth. And incidentally, I'm a racist too because every white person was born and conceived in racism. Every one of us. And I apologize for the racism of this board and myself. And I would like to say to Brother Parks, you're doing a good job. And let's put $50,000 on the street and catch the person. And let's raise our level of living. One minute.
Hey, thank you very much. Councilman Parks.
Thank you. Colleagues, I'll ask that we have a eye vote on a reward motion. This is a renewal of a murder case that occurred on Saturday, August 7, 2010. The victim, Jason Purvis Randall. Returned home from the store in the neighborhood of Florence and Figaroa, entered his parking lot area at his apartment complex at 7,000 South Hoover, where he lived. Unknown suspects confronted him. And as he entered the lot, and one suspect produced a firearm, shot him multiple times, and the suspect fled. The 77th Detectives is handling this case. They can be reached at 485-1383. Detective Garza and Detective Munn are involved with this case. And we ask that a $50,000 reward because they've run out of leads and need whatever assistance this reward will bring.
Thank you, Councilman Parks. We do have one more speaker out in Van Nuys. Mr. Rick Nightingale.
Yes, Rick Nightingale. You know, the public, I believe, should be getting different messages from the news media and so forth. But then when they start really pushing it and condemning people without all the evidence, like in New York, they're saying this gentleman in Florida that supposedly, well, he did, but, you know, killed that poor boy. Okay, that's a tragedy, and I agree with it. But then they say, white person. You know, they don't say that he's half-white and half-Hispanic. I mean, this is what causes these kind of, this kind of trouble. That they just don't, yeah, there was a tragedy and say it. They're not saying that the gentleman has a broken nose. They're not saying the gentleman turned around and had his head in the back split open, like he got knocked down. I have no idea what happened. But they're not getting all the facts. And then everybody gets on the bandwagon. And then if then, Geraldo turns around and says, "These kids shouldn't be wearing these hooded things." So then everybody goes out here and turns around and wears hoods. You know, I mean, what are they trying to prove? Get the facts. Look at the Black Panthers are in now.
Sir, please stay on topic. Because we're standing a reward.
I didn't mean my speech when I said I don't know enough about it.
Come on. You know, that you don't get all this evidence and the proof and so forth before you make a decision. And you jump off the bridge. And you people better learn. We had a watch riot for the same situation. It's just going to happen again.
Sir, this is about a reward. Thank you. Seeing what's on the queue, no other public comment cards. It's open row, closed row, tablet the vote.
Two of eyes.
Thank you very much. Our next item, Madam Clerk.
Item one, call special for cards.
Okay, we do have three cards on this item. We have Sean Murphy, John Walsh, and Arnold Sacks. Please come on up to the microphone.
Yes, I expect, and 10 eye votes. Thank you.
Thank you. John Walsh and Arnold Sacks, please come on up.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Come to our website, and you will see what you will see. You'll find out what we're talking about. You know what? This is reap. These are crooked landlords. And the city does an excellent job, incidentally. I'm not, Eric, if you're going to talk, just keep it down a little bit. He's trying to, he's got someone over here, he's got a checkbook out, and he's writing a campaign contribution. I will tell you right now.
Item one is lost.
This has to do with reap. See, you let the white guy before me talk for two minutes on nothing.
Mr. Walsh, this is on BID, please.
Okay. Our city is, has a problem with renters. And the problem with our city and renting and sometimes...
Mr. Walsh, this is item number one on the BID. I mean, item two on the BID.
Our city is 100% the most densest city in the world. Thank you. And in the U.S. One minute.
Thank you.
Heckled unless you are a racist.
Thank you very much. Sir Sacks.
Yes, thank you. Good morning again, Arnold Sacks. Another bid. So I was wondering, as far as this bid, you know, on item 14, you have a landscaping, security, programming, and maintenance ordinance for a bid for the Lincoln Heights Industrial Zone Business Improvement District. So I don't see that as a requirement in this bid, where you have landscaping, security, programming, and maintenance. The ordinance listed is any of these items, number one, two, three, and four, as part of this bid. But I also like to point out that on 9/26, the Downtown News did a story about the Downtown Score Corps, the bid, that's spending 64% of its annual budget on maintenance and security, which means it has 36% of its annual budget of $1.3 million to spend on other services. So would those services be programming and landscaping? Because in this article from the L.A. Times in 1609, somebody writes in quarterly taxes, this is an information column, that Cheryl Fishbein, the managing director of New York-based philanthropic capital advisors, suggests that your dollars will be spent more efficiently in an organization with a 9% to 14% overhead. Anything beyond that is inefficient. Well, if you have 36% of your funding left over after security and maintenance, where's money going? Take another 9% of that out, let's say 14% of that out, and you're left with 22%. And when you take 22% of $1.3 million, that's $260,000. Where's that money going? Councilman Reyes, sidewalks and streets.
Thank you very much. There's public comments. Someone on the queue, it's open row. We have Rick Nightingale, I'm sorry, Van Nuys. Mr. Nightingale, Van Nuys.
Yes, does this have anything about reaping error at all? Can you answer me that, please?
This is regarding a BID, Business Investment District?
Well, the investment though, but I mean, like Mr. Walsh was saying about reaping that, that how the city does the business with sometimes bringing in the owners of the property, about improvements and so forth. And when they don't get all the facts, that especially when you're trying to evict somebody, and then they come in there and they have their inspections, and...
Mr. Reyes, I don't believe he's talking about item nine.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just didn't understand what it was all, yeah. I thank you very much.
Thank you very much. See no other cards, no one on the queue. It's open row, closed row, tablet the vote.
Two of eyes.
Thank you very much. Next item?
Item number two, call special for cards.
We have Zuma Dog, Mr. Herman, and Matt Dowd.
Thank you. My name's Zuma Dog, legendary, historic, prophetic, historic folk hero icon in the city of Los Angeles for coming here and speaking about this, L.A. candidate for mayor. Now, this is Building and Safety. So I'm going to put down on record that I had an exclusive interview with Building and Safety head Bud Overmon Friday. And I said, Bud, how's the FBI investigation going? He said, it's always here. So I'd like to remind council, I'm asking for an eye vote on this because the FBI is investigating this very department for this very issue, lien. And I'd like to note, it just happens to be in Mr. Bill Rosendahl's district. Yeah, yeah, isn't it just great? We're trying to keep people at homes. We're trying to do everything we can to facilitate people at homes, except we got the problem with the Building and Safety. See, they put erroneous liens on the homes. And this one's a lien on my property in my district. But see, sometimes they do erroneous liens. And then, no matter what you do, it's impossible to get off the lien because Building and Safety is a corrupt FBI racket department, and it's under FBI investigation. So in other words, I don't know what to do. But I would vote no, because with the FBI investigating me, Bill Rosendahl's district, for this lien, I'd like to say that the liens are fake. They're phony. They're fraudulent. They're not legal and legitimate. And then you can't get off, and then when you try, so what happened was, my friend had an erroneous lien placed in Bill Rosendahl's district, just like this one, from the Building and Safety Department. So I said, gee, this person, it's an erroneous lien. This lien was put on the person's property with the wrong name, with the wrong owner. This is not the person who owns the property. The city said, oh, we're sorry, you're right. This was an erroneous lien. You're okay now. He said, well, can I have that faxed over in paper form? They would not do it. So once the erroneous liens pass down the line, you cannot get the city to send you the sign-off paper because it's a corrupt, Rico racketeering, mafia drug cartel-based city council. That's who runs it.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mr. Herman. Followed by Matt Dowd. Mr. Herman, Matt Dowd.
Sorry to cost you money, but under this item two, under this subject, Mr. Rosendahl, who's not here, or if you're somewhere in the background, please, city of Los Angeles, what has the Department of Building and Safety done to this city with its rounious actions against the Angelinos of our communities? Every council district has a community that has a value to this city. When do we determine to stop these illegal actions? Illegal actions towards people in our community? When you find them, when you put liens against their properties, when all they're trying to do is live the American dream like all of you? But again, I come back to the subject. The Los Angeles Municipal Code states what the regulations of the city's purpose for putting liens. I thought the city was to help people in our community. I thought the city was to invest in its constituents. I'm a constituent, Mr. Rosendahl. We are constituents. And if the FBI is investigating, why isn't the city of Los Angeles investigating in the actions of the city Department of Building and Safety? Again, I speak about actions of what departments have done. I speak about the bureaucracy of departments and what they're doing. I read. I learn. And I demand action from this city. An action that all of you take responsibility for your actions against the Angelinas of this city and in the state of California. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Matt Dowd.
All right, all right, we need to rebrand the city, obviously, with the FBI investigating. We need to come up with a new logo for the Department of Building and Safety. Some kind of a thing. Maybe we could just call them, you know, "I bribe, therefore I am." Or some other kind of thing that involve, you see, that's what happened with these guys. Guess you didn't pay the bribe when the Building and Safety inspector came by. You obviously weren't being compliant with the backdoor method that the city employs. And that's the same thing with Nooch giving money to the outside council. He's basically shoveling money one way so he can take it the other. And I know how he's taking it, just like Bill Rosendahl with these liens. Taking it off Joe Public on the street. It's all a scam, and I hope the FBI stay here and they drag you off in handcuffs, Bill Rosendahl, number one, and Dennis Zein.
Next speaker is from Van Nuys, Rick Nightingale.
Yes, thank you. Yes, regarding these liens and stuff. My family, we own an apartment building over here in North Hills. And basically, the same thing happened to us. We turned around, like I said a little bit earlier, that we had some people, we found out they're doing drug dealing. We tried to get rid of them. But in the meantime, while we were, you know, with your extension of trying to evict somebody, they turned around and destroyed inside, and they called on us and says that we weren't maintaining the building, that we were slum lords. So then they turn around and send the Building and Safety people over and want us to fix it. Well, we're already restoring the building, you know, we're putting, we're redoing the whole unit, putting all the brand-new windows in, all that next door. But we weren't touching that unit because I wouldn't dare go in there because I'd be afraid that this woman would do something and cause me to turn around and say, I attacked her or something. I wouldn't have put it against her because we were evicting them. So then we go to Building and Safety, and they're turning around and keep sending people out to inspect it. I go down, show them that we have a lawyer, show them that we're evicting them. And they says, well, that's too bad. We still have to go along with what's going on. This is our agenda. So then we keep going back and forth, and it ended up that it's already up to $2,500 worth of liens against the building, and they're going to start filing on us. So finally, I get down there, and they says, well, you got to have a hearing. Well, why didn't you tell me this before? Well, you kind of never really asked. So there's not people helping other people out. We finally got it settled, but it took forever. And we still had to pay a small amount, it was about $250, but it was better than keep adding on because the inspector comes out, and then when nothing's been done, then his senior comes out, and you're flicking, every time they come out, it's about $400, $500. That's how scammy this situation could be. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Marion Fogler. Marion Fogler.
I concur with Rick Nightingale. This is a bad system you've got here. And I know that David Salzberg has said it too. This is disgusting, the worst kind of thing that you're doing to people who want to make our communities here in Los Angeles. You're just tearing it apart. I mean, you're absolutely doing what Rick Nightingale was talking about. I mean, I don't know as much about the building and all that like Rick does. He's very, he's an expertise on this. He knows what he's saying. So as far as I'm concerned, you're dividing us and conquering us instead of uniting us and making us stand together. I think this is disgusting and dirty operations that you're doing here. I'm going to take my, save my minute now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing no one else on the queue, no other public comment cards. I believe there's a receiving file item. So we could move the next item?
Item 11, call special for cards.
Okay, so item number 11. Just a minute, Mr. Dowd, we haven't called you up yet. So we have a receiving file without objection. Okay, after public comments, so here we go, Mr. Herman, Mr. Dowd, and Mr. Zuma Dog. All three of you, just come on up.
Same time since I'm here, we'll talk about the rent escrow. Now, first of all, my qualifications for speaking on this topic, Zuma Dog, historic, legendary gadfly, coming here six years this week. Now, what I've found coming here for six years is a lot of these rent escrows come through. But it has now been told that the FBI is investigating not only the Building and Safety Department for taking bribes, but the L.A. Housing Department for this rent escrow issue. And I think it should be noted that there was bribe-taking in the L.A. H.D. Housing Department under Roberto Adolpe for the Koreatown Planning Department. under Roberto Adolpe for the Koreatown Planning Department, to get things done in Koreatown in Herb Weston's district. So, uh, what happens here is with the rent escrow, the city likes to pretend they wanna keep people in homes, but they come up through a fraud racket, because we have a mafia mob that is only here to seize properties. The City of Los Angeles has one goal, seize properties. It's like Vegas, they have one goal, you know, play the blackjack game, seize the people's money. Well, in LA, the housing is the property to be seized, so what happens is, they had a break law of which a court had to get involved, Superior Court said that the City of LA is in violation of the law by having the Housing Department cite Building and Safety Code. So people were being illegally fined, illegally feed, then it goes into lien, and it goes into REAP, and then the mistakes get passed down the line, and then they send out the hearing notices, late, so you get the notice for the hearing, after the hearing, you lose your property, people are kicked out, and then the, the, the city wins through illegal racketeering. So I'd like to say, as candidate for mayor in the 2013 election, I'd have to say, the top issue, since I've been coming here for six years, is that the city council is a bunch of full-of-s phonies, because they sit here and pretend like they wanna keep people in homes, but I go by what they actually do, and that is by having people take bribes and put illegal fines and fees until the FBI has to get involved. When are you gonna stop it?
Thank you. Mr. Herman, followed by Mr. Dowd.
Fellow Angelinos, constituents of this great city of Los Angeles, there are movies out there that can interpret the type of lifestyles and arrogance that some live. Yes, Mr. Reyes, the way some people live, but I have a dream, and I believe in it, I believe in the rights and the freedom of people owning, ownership of their homes in Los Angeles, not being pushed out. Take, for example, a neighbor of mine, real-life situation, he was under REAP, and he's still under REAP, because the city won't work with him to remove him off of REAP. Rent escrow account, what is the rent escrow account? I wanna know, will any individual here in this U-shaped council explain to the public what it is, in the detail, in the mannerism, mechanism of what it's meant to work for? I don't know, Los Angeles, I don't know, but I do need your support, I need your help. We need to come here and be a force to be reckoned, we need public time to speak on these important issues under rent escrow, under what Building and Safety is doing, what LA Housing Department is doing. I, again, demand a motion that this be discussed on an item, so the public can speak about it, and then be informed. Hear our, hear our cries, look at our concerns, because this is what LAUSD has done for me, an education, and now I'm giving it back to you, the public, and to you here to listen. Furthermore, and, let's stop the bribes, let's stop the greed of taking these fees from the people who need it to support themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Herman, Mr. Dowd.
Yes, so, I wanna speak to all the people who are involved, in fact, see, here's, here's the thing, city council, the people out there on the blogs are the people who are gonna show up in the juries to assess damages against you, and if you just go onto your blog while you're over there, Bernie and everybody, and just go read the general tone of what people think about the government and the city, and these are all the people who show up on the juries, people who lost their homes, people who went through, or, see, that you do it with the parking fines too, you've got the racket going on with those fees, and you have them with the termite inspections, and all these things, when the, when the, when the stakeholders wanna do something with their real property, they gotta jump through all your hoops, and these are them, so vote ahead, get the money, suck it dry, good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd. Okay, there, on that item, let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, next item?
Item 12, call special for cards.
Mr. Zine?
We have item 17 forthwith, please.
Yes, without objection. Okay, on item 12, if we could have Zuma-Dog, Arnold Sacks, and Matt Dowd. Oh, Mr. Alakon, hold, oh, one more. Yes.
Yeah. Council members, this is, uh, if I could ask CDD to step forward, yeah, this is actually a program that we've worked on with the Community Development Department, and the reason I'm calling it special, uh, and hopefully why there were cards submitted, is to focus on the opportunities that you may have in your own districts to conduct what we are calling Financial Fitness Days. So if the department, I, I'd like to ask the department to, uh, to make a brief presentation about why, uh, why we're doing this, and what we're, we're going to do, and hopefully each of you will have the opportunity to do one of these Financial Fitness Days in your districts when the time comes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, council member. Um, my name is Lisa Salazar, Community Development Operations Chief, I'm here with our Regional Area Director Renee Jones, who oversees operations in the North Valley, and Abigail Marquez, who's here to talk about Financial Fitness Day.
Good morning, council members. Allow me to give you some context before I go over the details of the event. The mayor designated the Community Development Department to serve as the liaison with the Cities for Financial Empowerment Coalition. The coalition consists of 11 cities from across the country, cities like San Francisco, New York, as well as other cities that get together every quarter to talk about our respective cities' financial empowerment initiatives and strategies. So this idea of a Financial Fitness Fair was initiated by the City of Seattle, and we felt like our residents here in Los Angeles would greatly benefit from duplicating this event here locally. So we've organized our first annual Financial Fitness Fair, which will be held next Saturday, or this Saturday, March 31st, at the Pacoima City Hall. Um, the event will culminate another successful free tax preparation season that is supported by the Earned Income Tax Credit Campaign, and will kick off Financial Literacy Month, which is in April. Um, the event offers more than just financial education seminars, it does provide comprehensive financial resources to the families that have been, um, most impacted by the financial crisis. We are organizing the event in Pacoima, because the IRS does reveal, um, that the ZIP Code 91331, as well as, um, the ZIP Code 90011, which is in South LA, are the two ZIP Codes that have the highest number of households that are EITC-eligible and are not accessing the credit. And also, we're hosting the event in Pacoima, because we have had tremendous support from Councilmember Alarcon in moving these initiatives forward. Um, so, it's much more comprehensive, we will offer free tax preparation services, uh, free one-on-one prevention counseling, foreclosure prevention counseling, free personal credit counseling, free benefit screening that will allow residents to access public benefits, such as CalFresh and Medi-Cal, as well as other public benefits, a resource fair, we also have a series of workshops that we will offer throughout the day in both English and in Spanish, that range from homebuyer education, investment and savings, college savings programs, protection against identity theft, and a workshop titled Life After Foreclosure. Um, so we hope to expand these efforts throughout the city, um, where we look forward to working with each of you, um, to organize similar events in your districts, and we do wanna thank the council members that we have been working with for a few years now, supporting these initiatives. Again, thank you to Councilmember Alarcon, to Councilmember Garcetti, Councilmember Reyes, who have supported this work in previous years.
Councilmen, council members, many years ago, I used to do, uh, financial literacy training to, uh, young women who were, uh, in a job training program in the San Fernando Valley, uh, training them how to do budgets, how to do, uh, how to get a loan, uh, what a checking account was all about. Uh, these were women between the age of 14 and 21, and, uh, and many of them were on their own emancipated minors, and, and, and so, uh, but the department was also telling me that, that senior citizens are particularly vulnerable during these, these times of financial crisis, and, uh, in any case, I think it's, uh, great, particularly for those communities that are economically challenged, uh, to the extent that we can provide them with, uh, fitness in terms of their, uh, financial dealings. So I wanna thank the Community Development Department for putting this program together, I encourage my colleagues to do the same in your districts where, uh, your communities are most challenged economically. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So now, if we could have the public comment on that item, and I think, uh, Mr. Zuma-Dog was first, uh, followed by Arnold Sacks, and Matt Dowd.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. My name's Zuma-Dog, LA candidate for mayor, and I care about people. Excuse me, so here's some things that I would suggest for the financial fitness for the people watching at home. First of all, you better start stacking your chips, because you need to keep money on hand for when you get arrested, because LAPD has been found to be doing racial profiling, so when you're pulled over because of that, you're gonna need money to get out on bail. Also, you're gonna need money for your own private ambulance services, because the city squandered all the money, and now they can't respond properly to emergencies, and like you heard, one minute could cost you your whole life. Also, you need money for the Building and Safety Department for when they come to your house to pay the inspector for the bribe, and then when the rent escrow inspector gets there, you need to pay for the bribe, and then also, when you have a permit up for renewal.
Mr. President, he's not talking about this item.
No, no, this is advice for the people that are participating in the fair.
Come on back to the item.
These people watching at home, I, they need to be.
Get back on the item.
They need to be financially fit, because the city is shaking them down with fees and fines and taxes.
Okay.
Inspector bribes.
Thank you, thank you.
They don't take the time that's taken away from me.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, okay, you're disrupting the meeting. Now, Mr. Sacks, please come forward, followed by Mr. Dowd.
Yes, thank you. Good, good afternoon, Arnold Sacks. Um, Los Angeles Financial Fitness Day. Maybe you could get, uh, Dr. Kevorkian to give an award out, oh wait, he did, but, um, I was thinking, how about, the operation wasn't a success, the patient died. Here's an article, "LA Business Tax Cut Could Cost $400 Million." 600 Workers Protested LAX From 3/23. We're having a Financial Fitness Day, but you're not really that fit, are you, after all? What exactly have you done? There's a nudge, another budget deficit. Oh, yeah, you did financially make fit the unions by giving them that 4% pay raise by laying off, what, 300 people, that you couldn't, one year, you couldn't come up with, uh, an adjustment on the, um, E-RIP. So now, that's another $30 million that is included in the budget deficit on a yearly basis. By the way, where has that source of revenue come from? You know, you had another item on your agenda today, uh, with, um, Lawa, oh no, excuse me, the Convention Center for, for maintenance, and this source of revenue was recognized. So where's the $30 million for the pay raises? Where's that source of revenue come from? Um, Mr. Coretz, a couple years, a year ago maybe, wanted, uh, million-dollar ideas, only needed to come up with $200 million ideas, and you'd have $200 million in savings. So, congratulations, the Titanic has hit rock bottom.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd.
Yes, just what they need, the people of Los Angeles take financial fitness advice from the city, who's in a financial crisis and has been for four years, against the advice of the public comment speakers who warned you. You've got the fire union guy up here, telling you that Paul Coretz is gonna choke on a donut and die in his district, because you've got no money. And here we are, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm aging, but I don't, I don't need, I don't need the City of LA to tell me, all you have to do is just go onto the blogs and, and read the, the news right there. Bernanke is gonna print a bunch more money, it's called QE3, so what you need is real assets, and have a limited amount of your savings in cash. Bernie Parks. Limited amount, reassign it, and have real property and real things, because the dollar is tanking.
Thank you. No more cards on this, on this item, so let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
And that brings us to where on the agenda?
Item 13, call special for cards.
Okay, John Walsh, Arnold Sacks, Mr. Herman, Matt Dowd.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, 70,000 successful hits in the past eight days for the, uh, Garcetti slitting, uh, the throat of Wendy Grule. This issue is BID, Business Improvement District, which means that your landlord, or you, if you own property, have to pay a certain tax to the, a Business Improvement District, and then they provide services, and they do provide police services, and in Hollywood, they do an excellent job, and I'm sure that these, this BID that's up before you does an excellent job, but let me show you what that means. It means that enormous percentage of the crime statistics are handled by the BID and create a false impression that the crime rate is dropping. The crime rate is surging in Hollywood over the past year. Thanks for the BID, we had another, uh, we had someone beaten up and robbed at Hollywood Highland two days ago, two rapes, Hollywood and Highland, in the last few, it is dangerous, and that's why I'm saying, come at 2:30 this afternoon to planning, as we will tell you what's happening in Hollywood, as they try to put through their planning, the Hollywood Community Plan, HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you. Mr. Herman, is it, or, is it you or Mr. Sacks that's?
Sacks.
Well, here, you, you're closer, you come. Arnold, I called your name, would you wait, make your way to the podium? Okay, Matt, you're there.
No, I'm gonna wave this one.
Okay, okay, Mr. Herman, come on. Mr. Sacks, make your way to the...
Something's happening in the city. While we wait for a long, the people report.
Paul's giving me death stare, but he doesn't have a comment, Matt.
Oh, wow.
If you made a puppy poke a head, it's hard.
Go.
Did you get that note?
Go.
There's some students from Cal State, East LA.
We'll make sure somebody introduces them.
Okay, thank you. Um, again, another Business Improvement District, here, um, from the Downtown News, 9/26/11, for this, uh, the Downtown Business Improvement District pays, again, like I mentioned, 64% of its annual budget of $1.3 million for street cleanliness and public safety in the historic core. So is there a breakdown for these other bids? I mean, there's a bid here, there's a bid there, there's a bid here, there's a bid there, Old McDonald had a bid, EIEIO. Is there a breakdown on the funds that are involved in this? Because if they're involved in that, and a lot of these bids take the place of the redevelopment, the work that the Redevelopment Agency is, and as we've heard, poor Councilman Ed Reyes has no more redevelopment funds, but he has Business Improvement Districts in his area, don't they pick up the slack for street improvement, sidewalk improvement? Wouldn't that be a process for the redevelopment aides? Oh, that's right, we don't have it. So for 10 years, or 12 years, 10 years while he was in office, and he did have it.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Sacks.
When it comes to business improvement, we should consider what's the importance about public transportation. Should we spend billions of dollars for unnecessary transportation, such as this trolley through the Broadway? the Broadway? Think about what's been on Soto Street for seven years, a barrier in violation of not just individuals' disability rights, but my rights to use access on the corridor at any time. Let's put money in use to where it belongs, Mr. Wesson. On Soto, Mr. Weezer, CD14, seven years, I personally have been waiting.
Mr. President, he's not talking about this business improvement district.
Okay, just link it back to it.
When it comes to planning, let us plan for the community. Let us not plan for the interests of business. City Attorney, you can shake your head all you want, but this is a fact. To make improvements on the Broadway, let's make it for everyone to enjoy, not waste public funds.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The...Marian Fogler in the valley?
Here we go, folks. They're spinning our wheels. This is ridiculous. We disbanded the agency so we can use the funds that we're supposed to be using it for everybody, not just for a few people. And you're doing contrary to what our mission was set out to do. Okay? You know, when you have a business improvement district, you're supposed to allocate the money for the whole district and not just for a few. So I'm not very happy with your performance here. Right now, you got an F. Let's bring it up. Vote no on this matter. Thank you.
All right. On this item, let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
And I just want to remind people in the audience, when you're going to speak on an item, that you need to make sure your card is submitted prior to discussion on that item. Mr. Englander?
Yes, can I just ask that items four, five, six, and 16th be sent forthwith?
Forthwith. All right. That brings us where?
Item 15, call special for cards.
Okay, I have a card for Mr. Matt Dow.
All right, yeah, I want to change that rule, too, because I believe if somebody stands up and says something about an item, and then all of a sudden, you're like, no, and you need to have your comment, then you should be able to have it. Anyway, this one, see, these are the things that we want the money for. DNA testing for LAPD. See, these are important things. DNA kits. You know, not guitar cases lying on some imaginary line, you know, out of compliance with some dumb code. I'm so tired of it. That's why we're here. That's why Paul Coretz, it's Paul Coretz Day in the city of LA. Burger King Day, whatever you want to call it. But let's not choke on the rape kits. Don't let LAPD choke on...
He's talking about 16 instead of 15.
Okay. No more cards on item 15? On that item, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
What's next?
Item 16, call special for cards.
Okay, on item 16, I've got Arminek Norjanian, Sean Murphy, Mary Ann Fogler, Donna Peirman. Please come forward. Let's come on. All right.
Respectable city council members, Deaf, blind, and illiterate, actually, I supported Resolution 16, well, actually, because it's called for extending that forensic deoxyribonucleic acid, DNA in our...DNA analysis contracts. Well, actually, City of Los Angeles needs DNA analysis very much, and we need to pay those companies, you know, in order to get those analysis up and running, you know. And actually, well, actually, we need to extend those, but we need to...those companies, like that Ouchie-Selmack and Sterological Research Institute should not understand that blank check, you know, or, you know, we should actually submit reports to the City of Los Angeles about the amount of jobs. And the City of Los Angeles needs also to adopt their reports in order for...to analyze, you know, to let them, you know, testify in front of city council members and give them a brief report, you know, brief report of a job done, and then we will make our judgment and consider if they're worthy, their contract being worthy extended or not. So this will be done in a very deliberate manner, you know. Otherwise, the city might necessarily lose better bidders, you know, and I believe a city should do competitive bidding for all companies, including with psychological testing and stuff like that, you know, because competitive bidding helps improve the quality of all tests, improve the quality of life, and actually improve our images, you know, as politicians.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes, I expect 10 ayes on this one.
Thank you. Okay, now let's go to the valley, Ms. Fogler, followed by Ms. Peirman.
I want to be called 14 also. I wanted to let you know that the O.J. Simpson case was compromised, and we should have... the labs need to be on top of it here, folks. You know, I mean, lives could be saved. People who are being locked up, they had one on the 60 Minutes. The DNA is a fabulous scientific breakthrough, including the case that's going on now in Florida for the Zimmerman thing. It's a fiasco, crazy thing, and it needs to be...our lab can go out there and find the truth. Get the truth out, folks, so that we don't get divided. We need to be standing together. We have a war going on, and this is perfect, scientific proof, and even showing to show about the 17 deaths that this murderer bails, that has been charged with murder. Think of all the crimes that we can solve and bring the truth out. The fact speaks for itself. Let's not lose our heads and don't...stay calm and let justice take its place here and carry it through. Let's not take it out on others, because we have scientific analysis now that's so great, and I'm very impressed with this, and I'm very happy to see that we have Quincy now. You remember the show Quincy? We need to get that back on, please, to show, and Dr. G, to show proof that these kind of things cannot be over, you know, taken, you know, out of context, because science speaks for itself. So let's find out the truth of what happened in Florida and not lose our heads. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Fogler. Where's Ms. Peirman? Oh, there you are.
Okay, yeah, I concur with Marian. Yeah, that's what we need to do. That's what I meant to say earlier when I was speaking in public comment, that I mean to say that we need to find out the facts, and DNA is a perfect way. I am so thankful that we have DNA at our fingertips, that from a long time ago, it just by hearsay, and there was no other way that people could find out whether somebody did something or not. But now, may not be perfect, and as a matter of fact, we have to make sure that if it's compromised, I meant to say. It may not be done perfect if it's compromised. If you were to go in there and smudge DNA before somebody can see it, or not put it in its proper bags, you need security. You need to be able to secure the evidence before, you know, very first thing, very...always think that you have to secure the evidence so that it can...we'll find out. Either we can find out the person has done it, or we can find out the person is innocent. So it can go on either way. So I'm very thankful that we have DNA, and we need to spend...keep our money over doing things like that to...rather than wasting money and throwing it away on useless projects that the city council thinks are so great, and, you know, and putting money for the CRA and also using money for all these rail projects. And then we don't have the money for important things of life like the CRA...I mean, the DNA. We DNA is what we are. We need not throw our money away for projects, and for the CRA, we need to do it for DNA, because that's essential in life. So thank you very much, and let's vote yes on DNA. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, on this item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay. Mr. Sacks indicated we have some students with us today. I don't remember...Cal State LA? East LA? Well, anyway, welcome to your city council. The next item, please.
Item 18, call special for cards.
Okay, item 18, that's Mr. Herman. It's my understanding that Zuma Dogg's out of town. Mr. Herman, they tell me you're out of time. So that leaves us with...that leaves us with Mr. Walsh, and Mr. Walsh is out of time. What about Mr. Dow? Matthew, you got a minute? Come on forward.
See, that's how I won a federal case, budgeted the preliminary injunction right down to the last minute. Bernie Parks, you should be proud of that, because I didn't have an attorney. It's not easy to get your way, get through the federal court. Well, no, I'm leading to the whole thing. It's like, I'm going to make a prediction now, neighborhood councils will be over within the next 24 months due to budget constraints. So whatever you do now, it doesn't matter, they're a complete waste of time, and here's why. I was part of the neighborhood council, I went to the...I was part of a committee. They go, oh, yeah, we got the neighborhood council for Venice Beach, for the oceanfront walk. So I went and joined that, and I was a member, went, did all these things, and I had to deal with all these nutcases and all these purists and all these people who got no idea what it's really like in the federal court. And then after all of the bullshit, they rejected it in a neighborhood council. That's what I want to say.
Matthew, well, you said it, and now your time is up. All right. Now, on this item, in fact, Mr. Walsh, I've been informed that you're out of time. Am I accurate with that? Okay, on this item, on this item, let us open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay. Any more business before this council?
Council has motions for posted and referral.
They are posted and referred.
That's what it is.
Announcements, members? Could we please...could everybody please rise for adjourned motions? Any adjourned motions, members? Any adjourned motions? Okay. And this council is adjourned.